So, uh... We're gonna let the...
Call this meeting over.
Yes, we're gonna call this other meeting there. So, everybody's welcome to stay if they want, or you can leave, but we're gonna go ahead and start. It's supposed to be an off-stand, or it's like a meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, did you leave your seat?
Sure, let's all hit and pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, we are again appreciative of your presence. Lord, we know your existence. Lord, we ask that you will be with these elected officials tonight, that you will guide them, give them the courage and the wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made. We also ask that you'll be with everybody in attendance tonight, that you'll give them a safe trip to back to their homes. We ask that all this in your son's name we pray.
Ms. Carlin, could you come and receive this recognition for Ms. Lally, please? Here we have from the delegates from Commonwealth of Virginia, hereby extends the deepest sympathy to all who share the loss and the death of Louis Leslie. From what I understand, you were on the treadmill, and we're looking to send the family that you had here. We wanted you to be able to happen.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And that's why I feel I'm very close to you.
Appreciate that.
The next on the agenda is the annual update on Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. Mr. Gina Sawyer.
May I raise my hand?
Sure, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed councilmembers, and Mr. Day. This is Renee Hatney. She is our business development and public relations director at Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. And I am Gina Thader, the executive director for Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. And our address is Post Office Block 765, Cedar Bluff, Virginia. The reason I'm here tonight is I appreciate you all giving me an opportunity to speak, and I'll try not to take up too much of your time, because we all know that when I get to talk about Appalachian Agency, it truly is a passion, and so I can go on for days, an hour, hours and days. But Appalachian Agency was designated, ALC is designated as an area HCM agent in 1975 by the Virginia Department of Aging to serve McCann, Dixon, Russell, and Tassel counties. We are a profit nonprofit. We are funded through federal, state, local, and grant collections as well. And most of our funding from federal and state has been level for 30 years. So we have gone after other programs, even though we started with the core programs, which is nutrition, care coordination, and enhanced services such as personal care at HomeMaker. But we do this because we love our seniors and we want our seniors to age well and to age healthy and to remain in their home. Today, we still operate those core programs, but we now deliver over 145,000 meals a year in this four-county area to our homebound individuals. We have eight concrete nutrition sites. Three of those are in the Tassel County area. And we have run to over 30 different programs within the agency. And we are one of the largest AAAs in the state. We employ over 210 individuals. We have a $14 million budget now. Considering we have local level funding, we have really grown our programs from a social program to business programs. We have an intergenerational daycare program. We have, these are some of our newer programs. It's great to see our seniors and our children enjoy each other and develop wonderful lasting relationships. We have a medical program called PACE, and it is a very complex program, but we do provide medical care. I liken us to Humana on steroids, because we are both the payer and the provider. So if you think of Humana on steroids, we have a license to practice medicine, Humana doesn't. So, although I think they do. So we also now have a public transit program. One of the things that we are doing based on some of our needs assessments is that we are moving into the realm of providing medical transportation to individuals, and we hope that this time next year we will be providing transportation for our veterans as well. We have a senior living community. We have 9.38 acres. There's 32 mobile homes on this property. We own 11 of those, and those homes have been retrofitted. They have also been made handicapped accessible with ramps and using universal design inside the homes. A lot of those have been taken all the way down to the studs and remodeled as well. We are currently building our third adult daycare in Fossil Mills. So we really are being very progressive in our community. I would like you to just take a few minutes to review our annual report, which is in the binder you see. And again, we, which discusses some of our larger programs, but it also includes our success stories. The binder that you see was actually created by one of our PACE participants through our Art at Your Own PACE program, which was through a grant through the Alzheimer's Foundation. So Ms. Reynolds won the award for, and won this competition and was awarded some money, as well as being on our final there. We also, upcoming events that we would love your support and participation. Number one, Mr. Mayor, we would love for you to join us for the Mayor's for Mails program. And we will also have a March for Meals program in March. This is supported by the Meals on Wheels program. This will be on March the 26th. We had this in Tassel last year, but we will have it in Richlands on March the 26th. And we will actually do a march down the street, and then we will end that march at our new property on 1500 Front Street. And we will have what we call a progress reveal, because we're not completely finished with it. There will be a progress reveal for our new nutrition site. We are also subaching for a new nutrition site for Tassel due to the accessibility issues that we have with our Tassel senior site, with our current site, and with the age of the equipment that we are now currently using to provide meals five days a week to our PACE program and the generational daycare program, as well as to other sites within the county. We are also working towards raising matching funds for our pet food program. Many of our seniors will feed their meal to their pets and go without, rather than give up to pets. They are, these pets are their family, and they prevent loneliness. We also will be hosting the Mobile Pet, the Pet Clinic Clinic, along with Painter Pet. And that doesn't mean we're actually painting a pet. We will paint a picture of a pet, a pet on April the 6th at Appalachian Agency. So we're very proud to have the Mobile Pet Clinic there, and they will be providing services, veterinary services on-site at that. Money is dedicated as Older Americans Month, and Appalachian Agency will host an open house. We've been doing this for nine years now. But we also will have a conference, a conference of health there. It is open to everyone. It is free to the public. But our seniors really do come from all four counties on that day. They enjoy a day of fun and games, especially Vino. They all love Vino. And they will share a meal. So we hope that you will join us on that day, which is the third Saturday in May, May 18. And if you have any family members, if you have neighbors, or just citizens within the town of Tassel that you are concerned about, that you are worried that they may be lonely, that they're in their homes, and that they are homebound and need our services, please do not hesitate to call us. But thank you for this opportunity and thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm kind of ashamed to say that I'm familiar at all with this agency. And that's, yeah.
When people come to visit us, we are at 216 Coltridge Road, which is right next to the Community College in the Wardell Industrial Park. We're the pretty part of the industrial park at the top. Don't come tomorrow and surround effect that we said that. But when you come, you are quite impressed with what we do.
Well, and definitely check it out.
We have built a child daycare, because we had to expand our footprint as well. We take children from six weeks all the way to 12 years and 11 months. After school, before school.
Kind of 17 and 16-year-old, that's a lot.
Actually, we do work with them through the school system as well. So we actually take every age group, even though they're senior citizens. I said we take them from six weeks from pre-ado to grade.
Well, I always think of rolly years, too.
Yes, I always think of rolly years.
Well, thank you very much for this. It was very enlightening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. That's not all they do, Mr. Mayor. She also does transport for the events we have with them. They absolutely step up to the plate for all of the guys, specifically Tassel. So I think even though she's down that way, she's kind of biased toward that.
The lights has run green.
Okay, next, it looks like the office is going to be fine. Thank you, Ben requests for his request.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor. I want to give just a little bit of backstory before we do events here. What, the three of us are very active in the Tassel Area Chamber of Commerce. We all present on the board. We're very active in events in the town, as you all know, because we are here repeatedly. About a year ago, we developed a group of our small business owners. And we started having five monthly meetings, and we bring in guest speakers, and we come to talk to our business owners about employee retention, social media, marketing, things like that. And last spring, we were lucky enough to have a guest speaker from Northern Virginia. His name is Mark Wilson. He's Small Business Development Center at Southwest. Paid for him to come and speak to us. And he actually went around to all the businesses. He spent about an hour with us all. He gave us ideas and just, he's so inspiring. Anyway, in speaking with the chamber, he suggested that we think about developing the First Fridays event for Tassel. He pointed out the beauty of Main Street, and he's right. And Main Street is such an asset, and it's unique to us. No one else has it. And we really have to capitalize on that, and we do. But I think we're missing some opportunities there. So we are proposing an event, the first Friday of June, July, and August. We would have live music. We'd have a band. We want the stores, the retail stores, all the restaurants to extend their hours, and the restaurants to actually extend their restaurants out to the street, such as like we did for Oktoberfest and the Praisins. We want to invite the art community to be involved, set up their, you know, their wares. Maybe we thought about using the county administration building for displays. Claudine has talked to Biggie Booth about bringing in some herb vendors to do a special for the evening. You know, maybe do one of the classes that she offers, something like that. And along with that, ideally, we would like to have a wine vendor and a beer truck as well. So we are requesting that we can move forward with the first Friday event. Want to add anything?
I think you've covered it all.
Do you want to do that? We have the Cruisin', and that brings in thousands of people. Five Cruisin's in a summer. And my store, my boutique, benefits greatly from that. However, the Cruisin's are very, they target a very specific demographic. And there's, you know, the millennials, and we have young professionals here and around the area. We want to bring them here. We have no events for them. We have Oktoberfest, so we have one event for this demographic. And they love Oktoberfest, and it's a hit every year. Anywhere from 4,000, 3,000, 4,000 every year. And the feedback that we hear from the Oktoberfest demographic is, we want something else. We want, you know, we want another event to attend. And no one else has the first Friday in our area. Bluefield has a very similar event, however, they do theirs on Thursday. And we feel Friday is a much better, much better day for that. What we, we have spoken with John Gunner of Virginia ABC. He's not only okayed it, he is super excited about it, because he falls into that demographic that's looking for something to do. We thought about, perhaps, if we're free admission, and then we have the beer truck and the wine truck, and we charge, you know, for a band. That's the way that Bluefield does their field fest. You pay $10 for a wristband, you get X amount of drinks. I think, I think they do three. We talked about doing five, so they would get, you know, get their band mark so that they're not, you know, overdrinking. We would get that ABC license through the Chamber of Commerce.
Another thing, too, about having it on a Friday, and you have, you know, June, July, August, is that it's looking at it as, okay, they can come in, they have something on Friday to do. Saturday, if they stay, they, Saturday, they can go biking, hiking, whatever. Aqua park, you know, whatever the case may be. So kind of something for the entire weekend and for the entire family, if they so choose. So just normal.
So what time would we be looking at closing off Main Street?
We would think it would start at 5:30 or 6:00.
Because we'd actually let, like, the manning.
Right. Like, after business hours for pretty professionals on Main Street.
But no restaurants would be blocked off?
No. We have actually spoken to every single restaurant on Main Street, and everyone's on board. If these events we have on Main Street are such a boost to the restaurants and to my business and to Biggie's. Tassel is the common destination. We just have, and we have to keep that momentum going and offer new things and new things to do. We lose a huge chunk of business to areas like Bristol, because they have, they have these things there.
And Roanoke.
And Roanoke. And no, we're not Bristol or Roanoke, but we can, we can offer something for that huge piece of population that we're missing tomorrow on there.
So a question on the alcohol partner wristband. So if I get three or five drinks for the wristband, so that's done. Can I get rid of it and still go into the restaurant and order another drink or something of that nature? Or do you have, can you only get drinks from the beer truck or whatever? Could I go into Painted Peak and grab?
You could go into Painted Peak, and it would be up to them to determine whether you have been overserved prior to.
Okay, so the band, in that case, what do you want?
The band doesn't do you any good in the restaurant. So, yes.
Okay, that's just what I'm going to ask.
So what we initially wanted this to be was something called Sid and Scroll, where it would be the same concept on Main Street. You have the music, but the patrons could go into the restaurants, order a drink, walk down the street, shop at my store, you know, go in between friends. However, the ABC restrictions aren't quite there yet to allow that. There's legislation that's supposed to be, that's supposed to hopefully go through this summer. So our goal is to start this off on a small scale, and then hopefully next year we will be able to do the Sid and Scroll and promote that, because that, no one has that. So unique.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Well, and you already know it, yeah.
We want, you know, we're thinking as far as, for music, we want to appeal to, as I said, a different demographic. So we, like an 80's cover band would be our first, our first band. So that's kind of the direction that we're growing in, is a little bit different music than the Cruisin' offers.
So other than the closing of Main Street and waiving the sanction expense, what else can you offer us?
Well, we want approval to have the wine and beer on Main Street.
You're not asking for money.
You know, let me air it.
Did we play that part?
It's a very interesting task, task to try to, to try to manage growing pains in a budget. And the task of trying to manage and approve a budget is going to be before y'all real soon. So it's a thin line when we're already, we operate in the black, but it's a thin line when you see expenses approaching. But when you look at the return on investment that this could do for the community, it's got a massive return for all the businesses and families. But now what I find really interesting is these ladies right here. Claudine is already into Cruisin' and other events. And, you know, it's just amazing. I've met with them two or three times, and I'm telling you, they got their game going on. They really do. And I'm not saying that, Mayor, that's your wife. I'm saying it's about my neighbor. But they really do have a, have a plan together. And, you know, I'd like to ask, you know, for Councillor to unanimously support the event. And, you know, I mentioned that if you could get it through Councillor, that I would, don't make fun of my Councillor. I know. But you know, I would recommend to Councillor, we pick up the price of that band, which is about 15. Dean's student, I have three of those bands, 15 or so.
So you're volunteering to go with us?
Well, I'm, I'm doing, I've got a manager hat on making that comment, not just because it feels good, but I think it's got a return on investment. I think it's got a return for the community on it. And maybe, you know, the expenses or, you know, the profits override that for, you know, for everybody. So I would like to ask for Councillor's support, number one, to waive the historical cost we have for events. Number two, allow them to have the ABC licenses, allow them to have alcohol based on John Gunner's. And you want it in June, July, August, for all three of those months. You don't have to come back every month. And, you know, we'll, we'll make it happen. We'll make it happen and work together.
I'll make the decision when you approve it as proposed on that.
A second.
Plus the $4,000, $4,500 in advance? Yeah, plus $4,500.
And we should, we could live it.
So we have a second? We go down both?
We have a committee discussion?
Yeah, discussion, Dr.?
I don't think, I don't think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. And, but I would say that this town council in our next work session needs to revisit the historical expense that no one's ever paid. I know we did it for a reason, because we didn't want to close Main Street to businesses, but it doesn't seem to be working the way we've done it. So I think in our next work session, we need to, it makes more sense to revisit it rather than wave it every single time somebody comes to.
There are very valid reasons for that. I agree with Councillor Brown. We may have missed.
Get that to God, please.
If I may add, can we follow up with some of the business after the Oktoberfest, particularly the restaurants? And all of them said that is the best night that they had all year long. So that says a lot.
If Ms. Brooks asked a question, I might have heard wrong, but you're going to, you're going to operate the road blockages just like you did Cruisin's. But all the restaurants are on board, I think is what.
Absolutely. Every single restaurant is excited and on board then.
Very much.
That's been the biggest hurdle in the growing pain process, is communicating with everybody in the affected area.
And the other retail, obviously, it's on Main, it's on board. But which we, France, is also supportive and wants to participate with their artists. And we want this to be a cultural and art event. And when their mural that's coming to town is going to add so much ambiance to Main Street. And we want to.
Have you talked to Ms. Wright and what's on Main?
I think I can skip her over. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Good.
I vote yes.
Sir? Yeah. Yes? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excited? I feel about it. Buddy, you may just want to keep your eyes out for the mayor walking into your place after this ends at 9:00.
Victory.
I think that's the question you would really ask. The mayor all his fortune.
The next on the agenda, we have the approval of January 8th minutes. Are there?
I'll make a motion in blue.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No? So we can do a small one, or everybody do?
Yeah.
All right. Minus? All in favor?
Aye.
Minus approved. Next on the agenda is the approval of financial statements in the financial report.
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. The next, we have the committee and conference updates. Ms. Brooks, for the planning commission committee?
The planning commission did meet. The majority of the time taken up by the meeting was a presentation by a representative for the 2020 census. And the thing I learned from the whole presentation was that for every person who does not enlist with the census, sign up, fill out the paper, whatever, it costs us $1,600 in federal funding, which obviously we like to have. So there's going to be a tremendous push to hire lots of people to run the census this go-around and to have people actually fill out the form and do it. So that was really, there were a couple of other very minor issues, but that was the majority of the time that was spent on the census. 2020's coming.
It is.
There are also going to be lots of job opportunities. They're going to hire many people at big fat salaries. So I think there'll be lots of publicity.
I think she wants to have a presentation in front of the Congress tomorrow.
Yeah, she said she was coming back.
Right.
Hey, Todd, I hear from, there's some fat salaries coming. My smear mullens, you can just update on the training.
Well, the training staff work is continuing. The electrical plumbing work is just about finished, I believe, isn't it?
Well underway.
Well underway. The floor preparation is underway also. The, many of the exhibits are in place, and many more are taking shape. We are going to plan a ribbon cutting this spring. The exact date is not yet announced. We're waiting to see when school ends so we can involve some school groups in that activity. And the ribbon cutting will also include another mural here in Tassel, a unveiling of a depiction of Tassel in the shape of a seven-foot-tall, 11 feet-wide mural by the artist Helen Owens, that will depict the history of Tassel through the eyes of Louis Leslie, who we honor tonight. Lot of excitement coming to this transaction.
Sounds like it. But is there any unfinished business that we need to get through? Is there anything on here?
She doesn't locate you.
Yeah. Something that? All right, new business.
All right, uh, new business. So, uh, the, for the resolution authorizing the middle of grant funding application for the Tassel Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Project. Well, that's great. So could we, uh, I guess we need to get a motion.
Do we read?
Please, yeah.
Whereas the town of Tassel, Virginia has one of the primary objectives to provision an adequate wastewater facility. And whereas the town of Tassel wishes to apply for the Virginia Community Direct Funds for 2019 competitive grant funding cycle. Whereas the town, the title of the town project is the Tassel Regional Waste Water Treatment Plan Upgrade. Whereas the town is requesting grant funds from the Community Development Block Grant. Whereas the town has obtained or will obtain the balance of funding from the Department of Environmental Quality. And whereas two public hearings will be advertised and now therefore be adopted. The town council authorized the town manager, Sid Kenny, in all grant, including the Virginia Department of Health and Community Development for the Tassel Regional Waste Water Treatment Plan Upgrade Project. And design to the town manager and its representatives to sign all documents pertaining thereof given under my handle. But they have worked it out like ten, like who's also.
So I can get a motion to allow us to move forward with the grant submission?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Uh, get a book there? Uh, all in favor? All ayes. Next, the setup public hearing for the CDVG application for WWTP upgrade project. The first public hearing on two twenty-seven nineteen at four P M. And the second public hearing on March twelfth, twenty nineteen at seven fifteen P M.
We have to have two public hearings. The last one will obviously be on the March cancel meeting. We're also having one in the middle of the month on, on February twenty-seventh. Cancel does not have to be here. We'll advertise it. There'll be staff, uh, D and Q, potential D and Q staff here. We'll just take any comments. We have to, we have to have that twice. So that's the reason we're going to do it in the middle of the month. Just need cancel approval to hold those public hearings, they're stated. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussions? Right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Uh, next on the list, we need to schedule a budget work session. This looks like Saturday, February twenty-third at seven A M.
I hope it's good with everybody. We just, this morning got our final rate, which was a reason I was holding out on the budget work session. For insurance, which by the way, didn't go well for Dan. Never hear Daniel, but it didn't go well. So we're ready to, to move forward. So the twenty-third, you with your body say aye, yeah? That's good. Okay, alright. Chris, the new twenty-third, good? Okay, good.
Can I just ask, can I just ask?
Sure.
How long is that generally taking?
It's actually.
All that?
No, we put a timeline.
Oh, and it is.
Usually not fast.
We may have to come back.
Yeah, you may have to be by any. We've got four, we have three enterprise funds and a general fund. We got, actually, I've got three. We got an I D A fund.
Thank you.
Probably most, the general funds will be accommodated and water and sewage fund.
Alright, next, uh, Ben, do you have, uh, do you want to discuss the proposed rates for the Aqua Park?
Oh boy, here we go. So as I'm sure you know, summer's coming around the corner. We're all looking forward to it. He had the cold. Um, I'm personally truly excited the Aqua Park's coming back up. Um, and my ultimate goal is still to bring more people out there, get involved with the park, get them outside, see that park flourish. And the plans that I have right now with the Aqua Park are, I'm pretty sure they will help at least get the word out and get people talking more and utilizing the park with other accessories. Um, so package that you guys have or what you're looking at, you see the current Aqua Park prices and kayak and paddle boards. Those, except for one minor detail, I'm not tampering with, I don't plan to tamper with, and I'll get to that here shortly. But for the, for one of the first ones, uh, which I'm pretty excited about, Aqua Park party packages. Uh, we treat them like a pool party. Uh, basically, we put a guard out there, it'd be from the hours of five thirty to seven thirty P M. And only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, that process, there's two different packages they can get. They get a regular rental, the hundred seventy-five dollars, which includes two hours of private use of inflatables. Shelter one, which is the closest and also the largest shelter, uh, and one or two lifeguards, depending on how many we have. Uh, the other one would include food. A lot of people love concession, have the food that's there. So what we would do for that would be just charge the one seventy-five plus the seven twenty-five per person. Uh, so if they want to eat, they can. If they want to bring their pizza, they can do that, however they want to do it, cake and everything. But we give them the option to also have food that we would have by concession. And of course, they let us know ahead of time so that we can coordinate with our concession to be there and provide and cater the food to them. Um, and of course, the, it would include burgers, fries, coleslaw and dairy, which we would cart up to them. They would have to come down from the Aqua Park. And get it. Uh, the next one is one that I think we pick up really well is the shelter rental package. Uh, throughout the summer, weekends, there's family reunions, there's parties, the weekends are packed with shelters. And I mean, it's, it's a, it's a passage trying to fight the garbage and everything. It's just always a package of great. We're, what I want to do is open it from Friday, Saturday, Sundays, basically doing operations of the Aqua Park and have a twenty-five percent off discount off tickets of the entire purchase with their shelter rental. And the shelter rental, I can't remember off the top of my head, the price, but it's a reasonable price. Many people utilize it. I've had calls in the past asking. I actually have a woman's number in my phone that I would call if this does get approved, because she told the second that you guys make one, please let me know. Uh, they had a family reunion last year, huge one, had a bunch of kids running around Kids' Own, and they said they would love to put them in the Aqua Park. And I think this is something that I think multiple people, multiple families will be utilizing if we offer. Uh, could I have to mention, there's plenty of people I've seen from Grundy, Bluefield, Richland, Lebanon, they're all coming to, to the park, which, I mean, the scenery, everything is the perfect place for that kind of venue. And to add to Aqua Park, even if they don't take it, it's something they can hear about, tell somebody else who might. And it just keeps the spreading of the, basically the word mouth for the park. Um, now, to do this, they would have to be, so we have something, the all pre-sell tickets from, from next, for the next year, if you purchase the day after the current summer season. So as soon as our summer season ends, we can do the pre-sale tickets. And then it'd have to end by Easter, just so we can have it, so we could utilize this. The reasoning for that was, it just didn't seem fair, it didn't make much sense for the discount if they could just buy the pre-sale somewhere else. So it kind of just adds the package deal so that we can help them save them with a discount, they get the shelter and then have that as well. For the, for the last one, this is kind of trying to introduce, trying to stepping stones, see where it can get in the right direction. Um, Aqua Park weekend passes. And it's for one concession Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So they can't have it one weekend, use it on Friday, and the next weekend use it on Saturday. And we have little passes that have a date and seal on them to let us know. Um, the available days be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Aqua Park hours. The child pass, which is under fourteen years old, will be thirty-five dollars. Uh, the calculation is written out there. But it ultimately lead to a ten dollar discount for Friday, Saturday, Sunday. For adults, same thing, it could be also the same calculation. It would lead to another ten dollar discount for the adults. And not to mention, with that, it still gives a new pool for free as well. So if they want to go to the Aqua Park a little, they can still go down to the pool after, or if it's, we have to close the Aqua Park for whatever reason, they can still use the pool. Um, for this to work, which is going back to the original prices, we would have to remove the current five dollar discount. Because if somebody, if they just wanted to come after three o'clock, they could just do that instead, instead of buying a weekend pass. And this is hopefully a stepping stone to see how it reacts and make it more long-term, so the summer passes instead of the weekend pass. Kind of just see how the people take it and see if they like this better, if they're either the daily or the hourly, but just giving them more options. Something with, you know, a little more discounts, show that we're trying to suit them. Um, some simple ones that, that I've kind of talked to different people for, school functions. I have a school in McDowell County and I talked to Cherry McDaniels. Cherry actually already asked for three days before this evening came up. She said, you know, mark these down, if it gets approved, we want it, um, to give fifty percent off the entire ticket purchase. So kids, teachers, whoever's coming. Um, military discount, um, for five dollars an hour or fifteen for the full day. And it would only be for the ones who serve, not for, not including family and friends and everything, just be for the ones who serve. And then this year, we're going to start a summer soccer, trying to get those numbers up. I think a lot of conflicting sports hurt that, so we're going to have summer soccer and along with it add a five dollar discount for Aqua Park, which is soccer, with soccer scene, for summer soccer. Um, basically, all those, those main packages, all that's the goal is just to get more people in. Um, we've always spoken for each that we're not trying to, you know, make money, we don't want to lose any, but at the same time, we, you know, we gotta lose money in the, in this sense, we gotta get more people in. And I think last year we took a great step. Uh, like I said, I didn't really judge it based on just the money purpose, but the, the reaction to the kids, the parents, the people, even just people walking, they, they couldn't peek their eyes on. I think these packages will help kind of bring more people talking, get more people involved and get more options to help for, make more suitable for people. Um, now that's just in terms of the Aqua Park. Now for the pool.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
A suggestion, at least, and that's to, to the three that you have, the school function discount, the military discount, the summer soccer discount. I'd love to see a consideration for a, um, town system discount.
We, we, we could talk about that. It would be very hard to know for a package in town. I know we talked about checking the water bill. But for instance, I live in town, I pay a water bill, it's paid by the.
I think they, if they bought it here, if it was something where they buy it here at town hall, they need to buy like a packet and say, yeah, it does.
Oh yeah, they could buy it from a tree. I hadn't thought about that. That way, Lee Inc. would want to say, yep, they live in town.
So they have to buy it here or not?
Yeah, they have to buy it every day. They buy a packet of them. They don't buy one, they buy a packet to, to, to give a discount back to the citizens, these tax dollars you.
I'm like, yeah, I'm here, I'm like, hey, be good.
And actually, someone had not mentioned that these are bought through town halls. So these will, these will be for the parties, for the, for the shelter. They will be given those passes at town hall and they pay for their shelter rental if they choose to do it. And it'll be presented once they get there. So once they don't have to go through the whole line, wait and paying and doing all that stuff there. They'll just have the pass and get their life jackets and send them off the way. Kind of just to, to work injection of the actual building.
What kind of discount we won't give it to? Like ninety percent off?
Ninety?
I think it's a kind of like a package, I would imagine, for a significant discount. Fifty percent? I'm just throwing it out there.
Y'all get ready to vote on it now. So you're ready to figure, y'all get ready to vote on it all time. Before we do that, buddy, you want to talk about the pool?
Um, so, uh, before we jump to the school, I'm looking at, uh, well, the package is, uh, to where you can have one, two lifeguards covered. Isn't the amount of lifeguards based on how many people, not how many the rec department has available, but how many people are.
Well, yes, but the waivers that we actually have been signed saying there's no guarantee there will be a lifeguard on when you be there. It's kind of a swim at your own risk, if you will, sounds bad saying that.
They don't even have to have a period of law.
We don't have to have.
So when we were talking lifeguards for fishermen, uh, Mr. Byatt told us waivers don't really hold it. Yeah, they don't mean anything. We're just.
No, they do. They don't stop somebody from suing you or rioting. But it doesn't, they're not, they're not worth anything. They definitely aren't, because you've got, Virginia's an assumption of a good state. So when you contribute toward any of these things, so if you sign off and you do something, they're, they're not completely worth it.
We would never have zero lifeguard coverage after.
We did not. We did not last summer. Not the intention to always at least have one. We had three lifeguards every day. Yeah. We still want, if, for whatever reason, if we have to take that lifeguard out for, for somebody's hurt, they have to rush out and we're short staffed, there will not be a lifeguard there that would be able to shut down the whole Aqua Park because there are one lifeguard left that was out there. It's kind of just more so so that the people understand. But we, we make it a point and we hide extra guards for that purpose to have them out there at all times.
Every time we were there, you had two.
Yes. So there was always one.
Yeah, it's one the water, one up and they, I mean, it's like a thirty minute shift and they.
Oh, that's, oh, man, I won't fix that.
They did a good job.
Uh, so for the pool, this one's a little bit different. So I am requesting that we raise the price by fifty, by fifty cents. Um, I don't have the map on here, but the way we have it, at least for the summer pool passes, pool passes are going to be sensible higher. But for the day passes, they're a lot lower and, you know, we don't get much revenue, which is not getting out of gold, but at the same time, it is very low. Um, that's just one of the issues. The other one is, which is not the biggest issue, on weekends, the bank closes early, on Sundays, it's not open at all. We struggle a lot with change. Uh, I've had to go to the pop shop and use our little car washing machine to get changed multiple times a day. Uh, it's just hard to get quarters. And so it just kind of, it makes it easier in terms of that transition as well. I mean, if I'm through, they're going to give me bills, they don't really want to give me, of course, there's no really does. So it kind of helped along with that. We've actually had to let people in because we didn't have their change. And, you know, we told them, we'll give it to them later. And they normally, they could pay us anyway. And they said, you know, just hold it, give it to us later. And we tried it. Um, but it would just help the flow, the easier, so we're not trying to find change. And also, as listed here are the prices for Harmony Acres and Richlands. Um, they are, they are at four. And, uh, we actually, we have a lot of people that go from there to our pool and they are freezing. It's just nicer. It's clean water, it's, it's just a nice area, you have a whole park with you. So I don't think it's just the price range on the phone. I think it's just the atmosphere. So I think the fifty, the fifty cents wouldn't impact those people coming as well. Now, for the actual pool passes, um, we did, I did the calculations and I can't remember the exact number, but what they pay, so if one individual pays seventy-five dollars for the entire summer, they were paying the equivalent after ninety days' summer, paying for maybe fourteen days' total. So like I said, it's not the money purpose, but it, it's just really low. We're not really getting anything. We're hurting every single year. But it's just very low. They're, they're paying for not even a month of the three months' worth. So kind of just to give a little bump, not to drive people away from it, but give a little bump to put it up by twenty-five dollars. And again, you see Harmony Acres, they don't really have, uh, pool passes, except for the sixty passes, or sorry, thirty passes, and then Richlands. We're right up there with them.
So if we add the fifty percent off.
So I'd like to go back and make the children what, seven fifty and the adults ten?
Yeah, but I think that should be, they buy.
So which ones do you want to change?
So town, town residents, so if you put under new, 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 new town resident discount.
So it's not the total, but just the optional?
Do people use the pool, like buy a membership of a summer pass if they're outside of town?
No, I don't know. I'm not sure about outside town. We, I know we have one that everybody do it, they're blue deal. It's not really a lot.
And anybody should buy. We don't, we don't actually.
I know, I'm just curious, how many people from outside the town? But first of all, I think we're raised right now for a reasonable, um, very reasonable. But I think if, you know, our kids want to have fun in the Aqua Park for multiple days, a lot of them, that twenty day seemed to be a deterrent last summer, twenty bucks a day. So if we could do like a, I mean, fifty percent discount for a town resident. So if we sell them by like a six, I'm just saying, a six pack of it or something. So that not refundable, they gotta use them, they can't bring them back in August or September and say, hey, I want my money back, but, um, there's plenty of opportunity to use them all summer.
I hope nobody has an answer before I break to them without.
Why?
I have to go get a bullet.
I think this would just probably be, you know, marketed on our website for our evidence and, and we can post it there, but I think it's a nice way we have to get that there.
Okay, so again, fifty percent off residents, we'll figure out a way to do that. Is there any other changes or do you want to leave? Did I hear you recommend it? We're about to replicate. Did I hear you recommend?
That's just an opinion, Mike. Everybody else hasn't approved it.
I'm, I'm just saying, you're getting ready to vote on it. So do you want to, are you okay with, with the recommendation on the Lincolnshire pool rate?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you're okay? Okay, so you've got everything in front of you to vote on. And we also want to add a citizen, a town citizen discount of fifty percent on the Aqua Park.
Fifty by, what, six tickets?
Yeah, I can, I can tie it to six tickets. Okay, so, with six tickets, 50% off on the Aqua Park, all we need is a motion, a second, and a vote to approve that, and we'll take care of that.
I would agree to approve this proposal.
Without what I suggested, or?
No, just what I'm just saying, I made, I made it.
Second. The second? All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
So we already had the, if I understand it correctly, we've already had the reading, is that what we're at? Like, does it differ?
No, you have not had the reading, from what I understand.
You have already all done.
Right. So this is moving some agenda. Of course, being your champion, the person that did it.
We get a motion, the, the, some of. All in favor? All right, we're going to move that.
So we'll communicate with the, with the planning commission, they might have a special call meeting, we'll communicate via email, whatever, and then.
So, now we're going to bring up group for public comment. Is it RD Snee? Snee?
I'll try, I'll go though, I'm, can't talk, I'm trying to patch this out.
We had your executive session, you won't do this enough in form?
I'm sorry.
We had your executive session.
Do that thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, that was all we had signed up, is there anyone who may not have signed up? So, that concludes the, the public session, I appreciate everybody coming out, and we will close the meeting for it. Anybody want to go to executive session?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't give me my way.
Look out.
Yeah, absolutely.